It's great to see so many people come out and speak on this issue. I know that many of you represent hundreds of coworkers who couldn't be here today. And you are the people who keep this city running. The people who work in service positions, the seniors, disabled, and the poor should not have to wonder if they will be able to make it themselves. Those who work with the homeless should not have to live with the fear of being homeless. We cannot maintain a vital service system, social service system, without paying service workers enough to live on. The city needs to provide a cost of living adjustment and an increase in funding to nonprofits adequate to the task of raising wages. Those who work in the tourist industries are the lifeblood of the San Francisco economy. The people who cook our food and wash our dishes should earn enough to put food on their own table. Rent card, security, food service, and retail workers at the airport deserve a wage of which they can support their families. They shouldn't have to work two or three jobs to pay the rent. Today, we'd like to hear from people on this issue. I want to say I'm always willing to negotiate, but I'm not willing to jumble up a cliff in terms of the issues at hand. I think we're being very generous in allowing this item to be continued. My hope is that the board will have the good sense and the mere leadership ability to have this reflected in the budget this year. If not, the ballot looks very good. Again, I'm not locked in cement about certain issues, but there are bedrock principles involved. I'll allow myself to be kissed, but not to be made love to. And with that...
So much of the discussion on this item has been cast simply in financial terms. I want to touch on the human terms. What does it do to a marriage if the husband and wife cannot see one another because one has to work during the day and the other one has to work during the night? What does it do to children when the father hasn't worked two jobs and simply has no time to be with his kids? What does it do to families when they have to move in with in-laws and have two or three families in one residence? All of these are very, very destructive. We sometimes wonder why we have a gang problem. Gangs are always related to poverty and financial deprivation. Why do we have such a high divorce rate? There's many reasons for it, but one of them is financial. Why do we have... I have a Catholic school in our parish, and every discipline problem stems from the fact that there's not two parents there to bring up a kid, but especially with the father who's absent because of work. And so I would urge you to reinforce this living wage ordinance as simply a small measure of bettering the life of the citizens of San Francisco and the citizens, not just for the present, but also the future, the children of those families. Thank you.
Any worker putting in half, one half day's of work should receive a one good day of pay. And this pay should pay for the supportive family, pay the rent, and the food, and also the children's lunch money. Any wages that is less than $11 will not do. I ask all these supervisors who pass on me and those living wages for pension without change. Thank you.
As a young Hakina woman born and raised in San Francisco, I have witnessed many changes in this city. As the cost of living goes up, the wage stays at an all-time low. You say you are concerned with crime, poverty, and education. So why do teachers, social workers, and community activists get paid so little? The simple solution is to pay people a fair wage. In this time of technology and space fantasies, it seems our so-called citizens policy-making has forgotten how vital it is for people to interact with each other, to learn and teach each other, and to encourage our youth instead of locking them up and throwing them away with teeth. How can we expect you to value their education when they see this pay doesn't even value their education? Teachers who are dedicated to making education and caring for these students get burnt out really fast because they don't get paid enough. They have to deal with crowded classrooms, broken down corridors, and a lack of quality teacher training and support. There are so many people working hard towards eliminating poverty and crime, but if those people don't even get paid enough to pay their own bills and vices, how can we expect them to stay energetic and dedicated? We're not asking for mansions, gold ceilings, or computers in our cars. We're simply urging a way that can help us survive in the most expensive city. You can't push us out. The wrong you do will only come back to you, and you'll only have more people crying in the city hall.
I'm a local supervisor and a local worker with Power. And Power's people organizing unemployment rights. And Power's advanced organization of non-loyal workers. Okay. I'm a worker worker, and the work we do is hard. We clean the buses, and we have to be around people cleaning the feed with strong chemicals. And they wouldn't let us use the bathroom because they thought we were germs, so we had to use the potties. And they wanted to cut our lunch breaks. We had to wipe the hat. And we've seen them there a lot of times there. So we decided to have wages. Wages is where you get training and benefits, more money that you need while you're doing the job. And then, living wage is making us have more money and get better jobs and better housing. So, one of the supervisors, we want you to say yes to the living wage. And they tried to put us out of the living wage, the worker workers and the coworkers, but we think we are very important people, and we deserve a living wage. Thank you.
I am here as a religious person to make a moral plea for the people I encounter in my ministry who cannot feed their families on five, six, seven dollars an hour. They come to ours and other churches for assistance with food even though they work two and sometimes three jobs apiece. Because of what they have, they have limited time to spend with their children. Why should people working 40 to 60 hours a week have to come to the church or an agency to beg for food? The living wage is not a matter of charity. It's justice. I would make a special plea on behalf of our children in the city. When our city fails to pay just wages to their parents, we do them an injustice. And I would add this figure that the number of children who graduate from schools would be a half-time larger, half-number larger if their parents received a living wage. Finally, why is San Francisco a city that is proud of its many stands for justice and compassion, hesitating to join our neighboring cities such as Oakland, San Jose, Los Angeles, and 35 other cities to pass a living wage?
Now, I have a stage in California, so I don't think I can reference this. My name is Jerome Dean, and I'm a personal home health provider. Essentially, I want to support this proposition. And I want to confine my comments to the issue of wage equity. This society as a whole needs to look at this issue because it's a key issue. The haves and the have-nots have historically been the situation of struggle to survive overgained unnecessary wealth in a few hands. And I think a city like this, or a nation like this, living in a world with so much poverty, needs to face up to the fact that we got to tell the people that have a lot, "All right, you eat only so much, and let the other people have the rest." This inequity in wages, if somebody works 40 hours a week, they should be paid more than subsistence wages. And some rich person, like a Hugh McCall, who hauls in millions of dollars every year, should not be getting that honey. So it's an issue of why is so much money going into so few hands when so little is going into so many hands? And I think the wage should be 12, 13, or 14 dollars instead of 11, even though I know you're struggling for a living. Thank you.
My name is Sam Sill. I'm from Local 87, Janitor Union. Our 4,000 members strongly support the living wage law. We strongly believe the worker direct or indirect working under the city contract should have the standard reasonable wages. Besides that, we believe the living wage also can avoid subcontractor. They always have a violation unfair happen. Why, when subcontract take over the contract from the city hall, they always fire the longtime worker and pay the understated unfair low-wage new wage employee? That's a violation, that's unfair, that's cheating. They cheated both from city hall and the new employee. I will repeat, this is time for living wage law. Thank you.
Good afternoon,女士. On behalf of the Central American Christian Center, here in present, and we have a letter that Executive Director signed, Ramon Cadoan, who will be giving to this conference. I'm just going to read the first paragraph. I am ready to ask you for support for broad and strong living wage ordinance in San Francisco. And rising cost of rent has created a crisis for working families in this state. Two working parents need to earn over 12,000 an hour. And the cost of rent is over the amount of money that we earn here. So basically, what I've always been handing you this letter to you, and so we need to support this living wage, which will be just a small sample, on behalf of immigrants in this state. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lee Kaiser, and I'm a member of Power, and I'm also a local coworker. And I'd like to talk to you about some of the problems in the system. Very often, parents on welfare are pushed into low-wage jobs, and then often have already hard time and no benefits. And so that often leads them, because it doesn't make themselves sufficient for themselves and their families, that they often have to go back on welfare. So it's like a continuous cycle, and they never get a chance to get out of the system. So, and if you're on welfare and you don't have a job, they force you to be freely serviced for 32 hours a week, just like as a people working on a regular job, just for the check that you get, which is extremely low. And you don't get to choose what you want to go, do the service activity, place you work in, want. So I think we need higher wages, full benefits, better jobs, more jobs, and that are permanent, full-time, full benefits. And it's critically important for people on GA and Coworkers to be included in the living wage, because we're very important too. And we really need each and every one of you to support the living wage and to push it through the board to give it into law. And extremely important, it's a very vital issue. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Rich Marquez, and I'm a case manager of the Home Services Center North. And for those of you who don't know who we are, we are the homeless shelter located on the corner of Vulcan Avenue. We are open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and that's including holidays. And we are the ones on the front lines in this issue concerning homelessness in the city. We work so, so very hard at making sure that the homeless in the city have access to the services they need, mental health services, substance abuse services. We are the ones that are making sure that the homeless have a place to stay in our shelter and are fed. And we're so, so very hard at what we do, and I love the job I do. And it stresses me to know that I go home and wonder if I'm going to be able to make the rent payment on time and financially is going to be paid on time. And this is just my story. We have workers at the shelter who are raising families, single parents, mothers and fathers who are caring for children, and are trying to make a decent living for themselves as well. And we turn to work, and we struggle so hard. We can put our lives on the line every day when we go into the office because we don't know what we're going to expect, but we do when we work so hard. We deserve a living wage for the work we do. I ask you to urge and support this initiative for a living wage. We're having such a high turnover rate at the shelter because people can't make home a wage that's ever worth. If we can keep our shelter staffed, we can effectively meet the needs of the homeless, and we can effectively address the issue of homelessness in our state. And thank you for the time today, and please, be sure of your leadership and wish for a living wage.
My name is Carmen Brady, and I am an lawyer of San Francisco Alpharetta, with the company of Government International Services. I work with the Sky Chiefs and stuff like that. So you're here for everybody. You know, I come before you begin, as I did once before a few months ago, by delivering wages. And I ask you to raise the 27 bucks per hour. I live in Oakland, California, and I commute over here on the bus, San Transit. It costs me 11 bucks a day, a round trip. But I make an hour, what I bring home after taxes, is only $430. My rent is $700 for a two-day home. I have a daughter also, who is a very, very smart girl, who's one of the companies in Dallas, Texas. And she's so eager about everything that she wants to go to some school, and I can't afford to send her down there. And I'm feeling for them, and hoping I don't want them for it. And the lady that I talked to, I don't know the phone, she said, "I said $7500 for fifteen, $7200 for two hundred." Because we were taking from the store, and I can't afford to do that. Commuting over here, a month costs me almost $100 just to get to work and that, you know. And I would say, you got to be ready to donate wages, and I'm speaking for everybody at Alpharetta, and that's why I'm here. You know, I'm the first man at Alpharetta, a homeowner, the first person to touch people up, that's going to the specimen, or going to Fiji, and they don't go to the restaurant, just to see what's in the bag. And I just want to thank you for allowing me to come up here and serve for you, and ask you.
I also work for a homeless shelter. I am a single parent. I have three children. I'm not living off my own paycheck, two jobs, because when I started, welfare department told me to get off welfare. I got off welfare, went to some of my field where I'm working, and I didn't get two jobs because I couldn't afford the medical benefits for my kids. I have two children in school and one who are in college. I can't even help them with their books, but I do the best I can. But then, now these are my other two little boys at home, and I have to have my mother raising them. That's not my mother's job, that's my job. And I don't want to lose them to the system, and now, kind of, 10-year-old, you're around with, you're raising children, they do be lost to the system. You understand me? So I'm suffering late pay for my salary and my corporate salary because we're underpaid over work. I house 365 people, I have also a supervisor on the single room. I house 365 people, okay? $11 an hour. I work with everything, I'm frontline staff, they can come in, whatever we work, at the hall of school, mental services and everything, and we are very underpaid over work. Thank you.
I'm also appalled when I look at the current board of supervisors, U-Fos excluded. Apparently, they don't have the authority to address this issue. I mean, there are too many seats right here, and they could be asking these folks questions, listening to their comments, and trying to gain better standing here. I'm also appalled with the fact that government, our government, is supporting poverty. To me, it just does not make any sense to have contracts for people who live in this city where folks are employed cannot afford to live in San Francisco. When you look at the wage that was recommended by the task force set up to deal with this, they're referencing $700 a hour. If you're going to work 100 hours, you might be able to afford a suit you'll here in San Diego, and then the rest of the money, you might be able to buy, you know, a couple cans of soup. I think we should set up the pressure on these folks. I agree with these folks, because when the first suspicion backed in the board chambers, it had to go before the ballot. That's why I've had it today, we shouldn't waste any more time. We should up the fee, up the hour rate to 14 fifty where it belongs, and run a ballot. That very much.
My name is Bruce Young Jr. I'm a security guard at the Department of Human Services. And I have to commute from Oakland to here every day. And I would like to thank the Department of Human Services for the new contract that they put in to give us a higher wage. But I think everybody in this building should be able to get a living wage. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ken Jacobs of the Living Wage Coalition, and Mr. Tim Paulson from Local 87, who gives a chance to the curse to come up and speak. Thank you.
Regarding the living wage, I just wanted to add a couple of points to the powerful statements that have already been made. First of all, I wanted to just remind you that living wage is not just an issue of economic justice and dollars and cents, but it's also viewed by the communities as an issue of racial justice, immigrant rights, and gender equality. You know, because the majority, overwhelming majority of people that will directly benefit from the living wage are women, people of color, and immigrants. So, and also, you know, more importantly, as people have stated, as the gap between the rich and the poor and the haves and the have-nots in our society, our city continues to grow, continues to grow, increasingly, although not explicitly, women and people of color and immigrants that are locked into the bottom. So I really thank Supervisor Nunez for keeping this monumentally important issue on the agenda here at City Hall for over a year now. I would like to thank Supervisor Yee and Airman in advance for doing the right thing here and supporting a strong living wage ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Willie Wilson, I'm in charge of the car security, under contract with the DHS, the GA office. I'd like to take a moment this morning to thank a few people that support us, and I actually, I put support to the living wage office, Senator Paulson, Local 87, Mrs. Campbell, the Living Wage Coalition, and Catholic Charity of San Francisco. I was evicted on my own in Oakland, and now I'm living in a shelter in San Francisco with me and my wife and two kids. We couldn't afford to pay rent whether it was living in Oakland, so we got evicted. We had to come here in San Francisco. I had to take my wife out of college, but she was on the electronics. She had to get a job. And now we vote for it, we don't have the funds to buy it, to be able to keep a home, so we don't have the Catholic Charity to make a dance meeting for us so we can get permanent help in the city of San Francisco. I ask for supervisors this morning to look at these issues on all fronts of you, on all walks of life. And the job that I do, it gets very dangerous every day. I have to deal with all walks of life every day. Thank you.
I'm a co-director of Global Exchange, I'm up here in San Francisco. I don't know how hard it is to raise money, these salaries, but we've been working at sweatshops overseas, in the Asian, Vietnam, China, and Mexico. And we're part of organizing efforts in the US against inequalities in the global economy in Seattle and Washington. And I know more and more people are becoming aware of those inequalities, and I can tell you that they are very angry. As we look around our own community right now, we see the gap that may come wide into an abyss. San Francisco's always prided itself on its diversity, its tolerance, its welcoming. People come into the community and tourists. Right now, the forces of the market have made it a place where only a few will be able to live. The services on which this town attends are being provided by people who can no longer afford to live here. We don't want to live in a community where people spend their nights sitting in the bus because they don't have a home, and they're driving around in circles to come back to their full-time jobs. We don't want to live in a sweatshop community in our own community.
I know that currently, the mayor's office and the Living Wage Coalition, in very nice labor, are meeting on this issue. I keep sitting by the phone, hoping it might ring, I might get an invitation, but in the meantime, I trust my allies. I know that the mayor's representative indicated that if this was moved from committee today, that his chances at the full board would be very, very slim. And out of good faith, I'm going to respect that and call this item to the chair, to the call of the chair, but time is a wasting. There is framing of language, of the ballot. Much be preferred that the Board of Supervisors and working with the mayor come up with a living wage ordinance that is acceptable and will move us into the 21st century. So with that, I'd like to move that we continue the side to the call of the chair. So with that, I'd like to move that we continue deciding to the call of the chair.